We're an example to the nation of how to protect the natural world around us and combat the impact of a changing climate. We're already on track to exceed our goal of 80% clean energy by 2030, just six years from now. We have one of the most ambitious.
Mayor Pro Tem Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Fahy.
Here.
Mayor Lay.
Here.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Here.
Councilmember Hefner.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Present.
Okay, will you join me in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Do we have a motion concerning approval of the agenda?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The next item is public comments on items not on the agenda. And items on the consent agenda, please fill out a card if you would like to make public comment. Tell us your name when you get, when you're called by the city clerk. Come up to the podium, say your name. And whether you are a Lewisville resident, each speaker is limited to three minutes or six minutes if you are pooling time with another person in attendance. All opinions are welcome. Please be respectful of each speaker to ensure that everybody feels welcome here to share their comments. Please refrain from any cheering, clapping, booing, or otherwise disruptive behavior. You can take all of the thirty minutes that you have, or some of it. You can take all of the six minutes if you are able to pool or not. But we look forward to your comments. Do we have any public comments tonight? None, okay? Well, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have a motion concerning the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next is council informational comments and committee reports. Do council members have any informational items or committee reports that they would like to give? Can you, do you have anything on consortium from last week? Is there anything?
Um, no, not in particular. I don't have anything prepared from, from that. Apologies. But I was actually just thinking about, City Manager Langley, you're gonna talk about Economic Vitality Week next week?
Yeah.
Or Economic Vitality Day. But you're gonna, you're gonna cover that in your, in your report. That's great.
Um, just one last plug. One of the reasons we're meeting tonight, the reason we're meeting tonight is that Election Day is tomorrow. We have a couple of initiatives on the ballot, and we have a city council race in Ward One, and there are many other issues and items on the, on the ballot this year. We encourage you very strongly to exercise your right to be heard and get out there and vote. I think you can vote up to 6:59 PM tomorrow evening, and best place to do that, you can't mail it in any longer, is to go over to the rec center and just drop it in the box over there. So, thank you for that. Do we have anything on the City Manager's report tonight?
Yes, please, thank you. So next Tuesday is Veterans Day, and so many city offices at the library and historical museum are closed. However, the Recreation and Senior Center is open. On Monday, we have Economic Vitality Day, in which our Economic Vitality Manager will be hosting. It goes from 8:30 to 3:00 PM. It's being held at the library. One of the key items that Vanessa will be presenting are the Business Satisfaction Survey results and gap identification. And so that will be previewed at Economic Vitality Commission Meeting this Thursday. Two other items, our MMA is holding a town hall on November 13th from 4:30 to 6:00 PM at the airport. And then the mayor is doing the State of the City address on November 17th at 9:30 AM at the Simon here on Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our first regular item of business is adoption of the 2026 budget and mill levy certification. There are three connected items, and I will read them as quickly as I can because they are long. Resolution number 90, Series 2025, a resolution summarizing expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting a budget for the City of Lewisville, Colorado for the calendar year, beginning on the first day of January 2026 and ending on the last day of December 2026. Second is Resolution Number 91, Series 2025, the annual appropriation resolution for the City of Lewisville, Colorado for the calendar year beginning January 1st, 2026 and ending in December, on December 31st, 2026. And then finally, the Resolution Number 92, Series 2025, a resolution levying general property taxes for the year 2025 to help defray the costs of government for the City of Lewisville, Colorado for the 2026 budget. The difference between the first two is, one is authorizing, and summarizing and authorizing the revenues to be spent in the, or excuse me, the budget. And then the second is the actual appropriation of money for those budget items. So with no more explanation, I'm gonna give it over to you, Director Bailey.
Wonderful, thank you for that introduction. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and esteemed city council members. This evening's presentation is the city's 2026 budget and mill levy adoption. I would like to thank your council for their, and the finance committee for their hard work and supporting, hard work and support in successfully navigating these turbulent times. I would like to thank our City Manager Langley and Deputy City Manager Fox for your guidance and leadership. I would like to thank our city department heads, some of whom are here this evening, and their staff for their work and input. And I'd like to thank Mahir Mansour Badi, financial analyst, for his significant contributions. This budget aims to continue to provide the high level of service our residents and community have come to expect. It includes funding our core services such as public safety and our police department, who ensure Lewisville is a safe place to live, work, and play; our public works and utilities departments; our world-class parks, recreation, golf trails, and open spaces; our highly regarded cultural services department; library and historical museum; our community development and economic vitality departments; and the folks that work hard to support all the great work that they accomplish; our clerk, our IT department, HR, CMO, and finance. Other highlights in the 2026 budget are the market pay adjustment for police department, joining Boulder County ODM, significant investments in information technology, security, and process improvements, the Marshall Fire building permit rebate set aside, enhanced community events, and a structurally balanced 2026 budget. It's been a collaborative journey, and here we are, finally reached the bottom of this slide for the city's 2026 adoption and mill, 2026 budget and mill levy adoption. There have been no changes since the public hearing held on October 21st. Both of the city's mill levies are unchanged from 2025. They are our general operating mill levy at 5.184 and our Recreation Center debt service mill levy at 1.375. This evening, staff is recommending and requesting that city council approve the three resolutions: a resolution adopting the budget, a resolution appropriating the funds, and a resolution levying property tax. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Council members, are there any questions about any of these three? Okay. We take public comment. Do we have any public comment on the budget and the other items? Let's come back to council, perhaps for comment, maybe from the last comment.
Go ahead.
Finance?
I'll give, I think the Mayor Pro Tem wanted to say something.
Yeah, super brief, just, you know, for anyone who's tuning in right now, this is going very quickly because this has gone very slowly. We've, we've had a lot of meetings and done a lot of work, and so thank you, of course, to the finance committee that I'm not a part of, and to everyone who's put in all that hard work to get us to this moment. But again, we have, we have gone over these things over and over again, and that's why, that's why I think the brevity tonight and the lack of questions is because great work from everybody, and thank you to Sam and Diana as well for your work along this, and obviously everyone a part of this. I appreciate it. That's all.
Councilmember Kern?
I'll say something, I just, he had his hand up first. I share the, share the sentiment, appreciate all the hard work that went into this. It's really, I think, an example of how this process should go. I mean, it just went so well this year, so well, in fact, that I think we should do it again next year. That's all.
I think Mr. Tabor will be happy about that, and so will the charter. The only thing I would add to that is this is our new city manager's first budget, first budget cycle, and we're excited about that. It's a one-year budget, so it's, we're the second year of the two-year cycle. Next year will be beginning of a two-year cycle that will be a little bit more comprehensive, and look forward to that. So thanks to everybody on staff who's had a lot to do with this. There've been a lot of public involvement at various points in this. We had an absolutely stellar budget retreat this year, and big thanks to Sam and Diana for, and others for making that possible. It was just terrific. And of course, to the three members of the finance committee to my left, who've done an absolutely great job this year helping to, to work on it. So we can ask for motion now, so. Who would like to give a motion? Yes, Councilmember Hefner.
Yeah, I would move the passage of Resolutions Number 90, 91, and 92.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, good. And I think we've covered all three in that single motion, so. All right. The next item on the agenda, we just keep having long titles here, so I'll read this one. Ordinance Number 1907, Series 2025, an ordinance adopting by reference to 2024 International Building Code, 2024 International Residential Code, 2024 International Mechanical Code, 2024 International Fuel/Gas Code, 2024 International Fire Code, 2024 International Existing Building Code, 2024 International Plumbing Code, 2024 International Property Maintenance Code, 2024 International Swim, Pool, and Spa Code, the 1997 Uniform Housing Code, and the 2024 International Energy Conservation Code. This is on for second reading and public hearing advertised in the Daily Camera on October 12th, 2025, and again on October 26th, 2025. We have a staff presentation from Directors Carroll.
Good evening, Mayor Lay, members of City Council, Rob Zucaro, Community Development Director for the city. I'll be making the staff presentation. Like you mentioned, this is second reading and public hearing on the building code. We've been talking about this for a bit this year to, to get to this point for the adoption hearing. So here's all the codes. Again, we adopt these codes periodically. Typically, we do it every six years. The codes are updated by the International Code Council every three years. We tend to adopt every six years so that the development community and others can kind of get used to the code over time. It's a little easier on businesses and the development community to adopt every six years. So we're, we were, we're under the 2018 codes, except the energy code, which you know the history. We've adopted the, the 21 version with amendments, so. But all our other codes are the 18 version, and we're looking to update to the 24 code version. So staff has worked with our Building Code Board of Appeals closely on the draft. Mr. Root, our chief building official, is here this evening to help answer questions, but he worked specifically with the Building Code Board of Appeals, which is our advisory board, to draft our local amendments on the code, including the energy conservation code. City council did review different alternatives on the energy conservation code in August. They were looking at the Building Code Board of Appeals version, which is the base version with some local amendments, and also considered the regional cohort code, which is a strengthened energy code that includes some incentives for all electric construction, for example. Council did ask for this, for this adoption hearing to have the Building Code Board of Appeals version included. We also talked quite a bit about residential sprinklers, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that. So just to get into the energy code a little bit more, the, the version that Mr. Root and the Building Code Board of Appeals has drafted include local amendments to, to strengthen it above the base code. The main one is to include minimum standards for the efficiency, the shell of the building, so having minimum insulation requirements, for example, regardless of if somebody is going in and modeling. So it allows a lot of compliance pathways, including modeling pathways. We've seen in some instances where you, if you just do the modeling, that sometimes they're, the, the insulation values are going down, so we feel like having base insulation and thermal envelope, and then still allowing rating on top of that is the recommendation of the Building Code Board of Appeals. The regional co-code cohort, again, it does have some strengthening incentives. There are some communities in the metro area that are starting to adopt or are planning to consider adopting the cohort code. It is being promoted by the Denver Regional Council of Governments right now. Having alignment in the metro area is thought of as being important if all the communities are gonna adopt these more stringent codes so that everybody's on an equal playing field from a cost standpoint for construction. There are also some federal preemption issues on regulating gas-fired appliances, which limit potentially the ability to, to require all-electric construction, so the cohort code helps address those. Our code is also in comply, or the Building Code Board of Appeals recommended version is also in compliance with those standards. The cohort code also has more stringent standards for things like larger homes, so you have to have higher ratings, for example. On the residential fire sprinkler issue, the, our original version of the 2018 code, as you know, included residential fire sprinklers. We did take that out citywide as a cost consideration as part of the Marshall Fire rebuild. The Lewisville Fire Protection District has submitted a letter requesting that the city council consider adoption of residential fire sprinklers. So this is for single-family residential. Multi-family has sprinklers. It's a different code, so this is specifically to single-family. Here's a list of other communities in our region that do have residential fire sprinklers within their code. As we've mentioned in past discussions, there are some recent studies about the effectiveness of fire sprinklers when it comes to limiting damage on residential properties, as well as effectively helping to limit injuries and deaths with fire when there are fires in residences compared to homes without sprinklers. We did get some, we, we looked at some additional costs since first reading on what it costs to install sprinklers. We do think that the Association of Home Builders information that they provided is in the range of what it could cost, which was $5.50 per square foot. So that includes the installation and the design and for installation of the sprinklers for, so for a 2,500-square-foot home, that would come out to be $13,750. We did also find that many insurance companies offer some level of discounts for homes that have fire sprinklers installed in them. So, so those were the two big policy items. Certainly, we can answer questions about more detailed elements of the code, but those are the two policy items we've been focusing on, so that's why we went over those in more detail. Within the staff packet, there is a, a summary comparison of the 2018 codes to the 24 codes, so if you have any questions on that detailed summary, you can certainly ask those questions as well. So potential alternative tonight is to adopt the ordinance as drafted without amendments, or adopting it with any specific amendments that you, you may want. The third option is if there are more complex amendments, we would probably request that you continue the hearing so that we could help draft those more complex amendments. So those are the three options we presented. Be happy to answer any questions.
Council, questions? I, I have one question, which is with respect to the fire sprinklers. I do remember in 2022, the council voted to take that requirement out of the code, and I'm wondering, at this stage, how many people whose homes were destroyed in the Marshall Fire have not, have retained their homes, but, or retained their property, but have not yet rebuilt?
Yeah, how many homes have not rebuilt in the Marshall Fire? I don't have the exact number, but...
I don't, I wanna calculate it, not, not those purchased by investors, but those by the original.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, so it, it's somewhere in the range of 15 to 20. We will, I think, is original homeowners who still have vacant lots and haven't started the rebuild process.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Kern, and then Councilmember Fahy.
Thank you. Thank you both for all the work that went into this. It's really appreciated. Again, it's sort of like the, the previous ordinance. Lot of conversation, so we're probably gonna get through it a little bit quicker. I just was curious, you did make a few changes for this one. One of these is the exception for any Marshall Fire rebuilds in having to meet some of the, the fire sprinkler requirements. Does that mean we would need to do the second choice, the adopt the ordinance?
So we, we didn't make any changes related to fire sprinklers. What we changed, and I failed to mention that in my presentation, but as you recall, under our existing ordinance, original homeowner's building after the Marshall Fire could voluntarily exempt out of the more stringent 2021 energy code and instead build to the 2018 energy code. So we've brought that forward. So any original homeowners as drafted could opt out of the 24 energy code and instead build to the 2018 energy code. But we did not, we do not have similar language for sprinklers in the draft ordinance.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood. I thought that that was one of the changes that we had talked about. Then, okay, then it's not so much a question, it's gonna be a comment after. So that's not something that we're, you're prepared at this time to do with an amendment tonight, to give that opportunity to opt out of those sprinkler systems? Continue to, the...
I, I think council, if council wanted to take this, this second item, we could, you could have a condition that that exemption be added to the ordinance.
And do the rebuilds also have the option to still do the 21 energy code? Or would it, they would have to?
No, you know, in contemplating that, we didn't want to have, I mean, I think having three different code options is not ideal to administer, so we felt that most who are concerned about the cost of energy code, their best bet is to go down to the 2018 code. It's the most affordable to build to the less stringent. So if somebody was cost concerned with the 2024 version of the code, we, we would have them opting to the 2018 version.
So we have language around paying additional fees and tax around that? So how will we change that language? It's, it's all coordinated around 2018 or 2021, or the 21 net zero codes right now?
Right, yeah, so we did have some language around the 21 code that if you, that, if you built to the 2018 code, and this was related to the use tax, and so if you built to the 2018 code, then you could get the use tax rebate only to the amount of your original square footage. And then there was a little bit above that, I can't remember the percentage. So basically, there's a, it affects the use tax rebate. And that's not in the building code, that's in a different section of the code that provides for that. So if somebody was opting into the 2018 code, they would still be subject to that same use tax credit provision that we have in that tax section of the code.
And if they were in the, so, okay, so if they're in the process of, like, if there's a permit pending with you and they're building to the 21, however we need to do it, it still applies? Or do they have to convert to the 24?
If there's a building permit submitted, they are under the code that they submitted under. So this would only, so this would go into effect, you know, 30 days after it gets published, after this adoption, and then after that effective date, any building permits that come in after that date would be subject to this code.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Fahy? Okay, good. Because this is an ordinance, we're gonna have two rounds of public comment. So the first round of public comment is right now. Do we have any public comment?
First up is Patrick Haney, followed by, by Hale Christ, Christenman? Christensen? Sorry.
Hello, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Patrick Haney. I'm the regional coordinator in the Rocky Mountains for the National Fire Sprinkler Association. I'm not based in Lewisville, I live in Denver, I'm a third-generation Coloradan. I'm here today to ask you guys to keep fire sprinklers in your residential code. The IRC has included residential sprinklers since 2009, and as I'm sure you know, the IRC set the minimum standard of safety for residential buildings. 80% of all fire deaths in this country occur in residential dwellings. That's in people's homes, people's apartments, where people live, right? So with fire sprinklers, you have an 87% chance of survival when you have fire sprinklers in your house if you do have a fire. Fire is fast. I know I don't have to tell this community that. Residential fires are 800 times faster than they were 50 years ago. 50 years ago, you had 20 minutes to get out of your house before flashover occurred. If you don't know, flashover is the point when anything combustible in a room will combust, and when that happens, you do not survive. But today, because of lightweight modern construction, the synthetic materials that we find in our couches, in our tables, plastics, things like that, you have five minutes or less to get out of your house before flashover occurs. Then I was thinking about fire sprinklers, and it was in the presentation, which I thought was great. Around 87, 88% of the time, a single sprinkler head is gonna contain that fire to the room of origin. And once that's contained, it's gonna buy your family time to get out, it's gonna allow the fire department come, and they are gonna be able to either look at the fire, say, okay, we gotta put this out. Most of the time, the fire is put out by the time the fire department arrives when fire sprinklers are present. The big argument, obviously, is costs. I hear this all the time with home builders, right? So we'll take the numbers that you guys were working with from the HBA. I think they're a little bit on the higher side, but that's okay. $13,700 for a 25 square, or 2,500-square-foot house, that's about 2.2% of the cost of the builders. So the argument that we hear is, well, this is gonna make it unaccessible for people to live in our communities, right? This, the system is gonna make it unobtainable. The reality of that statement is the builders, and they will tell you this, they base their home prices on market value. They're, the system is not going to deter people from getting the same price for the house. Without sprinklers, the houses will be the same price. It's based on market value. They will just be considered substandard in comparison to the code. The reality of it is they are asking for marginal profits to be prioritized over the safety of the communities. Keeping fire sprinklers in your code is a commitment to saving lives, protecting property, and building community resilience, and I hope you guys agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
Next up is Fahy, followed by Kim.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for your support. Ms. Langley, nice to see you again. Mayor, and all support staff, we appreciate all your contributions. You may not hear it enough. My name is Fahy Christianian. I am, I am a Boulder resident and have been an employer in Boulder County for the last, since 1980. And I don't really wanna talk about the contributions that employers make to the community in terms of hiring people, having people go home with a paycheck, building community, contributing to the community. I wanna talk a little bit about perspectives from the field, specific to a project we embarked on two years ago, we call Aperture. Aperture is a building at the Colorado Tech Center. It's the dark building that we, we built out. It's an owner-occupied building for a new business that I launched in Lewisville. It's an owner occupied building for a new business that I launched in Louisville about eight years ago. The experiences that we went through on building this project, and I have to iterate, we are not a private equity firm investing in Louisville and taking profits out and sharing with shareholders. Everything's kind of going back into the community on on so many different levels. This project has, is probably one of the few things that I probably would not do again in my life. The cost overruns on this project alone, it would be, I think it would shock you to look at the PNL on this project, over 10% of our of our costs to build this building has gone to city costs and city fees, 10%. That includes the water tap fees, includes all sorts of permit fees. I'm not even including the cost of interest that we pay our financial institutions. If I added that, based on delays for waiting for permits, the cost to this project would be closer to about 15 to 16% going to interest and city fees. It's really exorbitant. Some of the ordinances that you guys are passing, with all due respect, don't factor in the 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 scaling of the actual costs of what it takes to actually build something. For example, we're talking about the fire sprinkler system. We just installed a sensor, one single sensor in this building, that cost us over $5,000. I would beg to have you analyze this cost of $12,000 for, which is about, you're saying 5% for fire mitigation. And the irony of it all is, you removed that process for residential applications where the most horrific event happened in Louisville, and you were able to kind of waive that. And in turn, you basically now are thinking of bringing it back. And you would think that after a horrific event like that.
Sir, I apologize, your time is up.
I understand. After a horrific event like that, I would think that that would be the the epitome of of implementing these policies. And you moved it back for a reason, to make it more accommodating for these people. Please analyze these costs filtering down to the businesses and the consumers before you implement these policies, because they're significantly higher than you realize. Thank you.
Next up is Kim, followed by Matt Berry.
Thank you for hearing our comments. My name is Kim Christianian, and I'm a small business owner with my husband here in Louisville. I just want to thank you all for your service, your dedication to public service. I know it's a thankless job, and you'd probably want to be somewhere else tonight, but we thank you for your service. I just want to share a couple of comments. I was reading in your agenda for the city of Louisville, and one element struck me. And it says, "The city opposes regulations that create significant new compliance costs or administrative burdens for businesses without demonstrating clear public benefit." So that is in your 2025 legislative agenda. And again, it's, "The city opposes regulations that create significant new compliance costs or administrative burdens for businesses without demonstrating clear public benefit." I just finished reading this book, Abundance. I don't know if anybody's heard about this. Ezra Klein and Derek Thompson, they talk about how we can't build anymore because the costs and the codes and the, are so prohibitively expensive that it, we're shooting ourselves in the foot. So the city of Louisville has implemented all of these green policies, which are admirable and really well thought out. But I think going forward and continuing to enhance these strict policies are going to, you're shooting yourself in the foot. What's happening is the costs are so prohibitive and so exorbitant that the rents that we are going to have to charge just to break even are not going to allow people to move out of their gas guzzling buildings and move into the green new buildings. So you really need to take a hard look at how restrictive you're putting these policies you're putting in and what the overall cost is going to be down the line. You know, you want to have affordable rents for businesses. You want to grow businesses in the city of Louisville. You're offering rebates to us to offset those lease rates. Why not look at your costs that you're incurring on the developers or the small businesses who are building and say, hey, you know, maybe we'll, instead of offering rebates to get businesses to get into new buildings, why don't we consider, you know, having better, so that it's not so expensive to build and the rents have to be so high? Thank you for your time, and I hope you consider the overall costs when you're implementing these codes.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Matt Berry, followed by Allison Kay.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Matt Berry, and I'm with the Building Code Board of Appeals, and I live in Louisville. I'm here to voice my strong support for adopting the 2024 ICC Building Codes, including the IECC as drafted without the cohort amendments. This step is about more than regulations, it's about safety, consistency, and environmental efficiency for everyone who lives, works, and builds in our community. These codes are developed through a national consensus-based process that brings together architects, engineers, builders, fire officials, and public safety experts from across the country. They represent the latest science, technology, and best practices in building safety and resilience. By adopting them as written, we're aligning with proven standards that protect lives, property, and reduces our environmental footprint. When we add local amendments, even small ones, we introduce complexity and confusion. Builders and inspectors have to learn unique rules that don't apply anywhere else, which can delay projects, increase costs, and result in unpermitted work. Adopting the ICC codes without the cohort amendments will create clarity, predictability, and fairness, qualities that attract investment and make compliance simpler for everyone. It also saves time and taxpayer dollars. Every local change requires training, enforcement, and coordination. It also brings the risk of misinterpretation and inconsistent interpretation of local amendments. By adopting the codes in full, we can focus our resources where they matter most: education, implementation, and ensuring safe, high-quality, energy-efficient buildings. Now, I know there are people here with concerns or ideas for improvement, and that input is incredibly valuable. Rather than creating one-off local amendments, I encourage those voices to join the national process that shapes these codes. The ICC has an open call for a committee right now that welcomes participation from professionals and citizens alike. You can find more information on the ICC website. This just came out October 10th. This is the call to committee. This is where the cohort needs to focus their efforts. By engaging directly in that process, our community's perspectives can influence the next generation in building standards, benefiting not us, just us, but community, communities across the country. Let's move together, adopt the 2024 codes without the cohort amendments, and commit to working collaboratively on the future of safe, sustainable construction. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Allison Kay.
Good evening, Mayor Lay and council members. My name is Allison Kay, and I'm a Louisville resident and chair of the Louisville Sustainability Advisory Board. On behalf of the board, I want to thank you for your thoughtful deliberation during the past few months on the 2024 International Energy Conservation Code packages. We appreciate the time and care you've given to this important decision, which will shape Louisville's energy, climate, and economic future for decades to come. After careful review, the Sustainability Advisory Board continues to recommend adoption of the Cohort Code packages, package with the 2024 IECC base. We believe it's the most effective, forward-looking, and strategically-aligned path to achieving Louisville's sustainability, resilience, and climate goals. There are several key reasons for this recommendation. First, preparedness for future state standards. The Cohort Code package positions Louisville to meet the forthcoming Low Energy and Carbon Code, which will apply to code updates after June 2026. Adopting it now minimizes regulatory uncertainty, avoids duplicative updates, and reduces future costs. Second, regional alignment and leadership. Golden has already adopted the Cohort Package, and North Glen is considering it. Other front-range communities are expected to follow throughout 2026. Joining this regional effort now promotes consistency for builders, streamlines enforcement, and reinforces Louisville's commitment to sustainability. Third, alignment with our Sustainability Action Plan. The package directly supports our goals for reducing greenhouse gas emissions and expanding clean energy by encouraging all-electric construction, heat pump adoption, and higher efficiency standards across building types. Fourth, long-term economic and community benefits. Building efficiently now will save residents and businesses on energy bills and prevent costly retrofits later. The package also ensures fairness by holding larger, higher-energy homes to stronger standards. Finally, enhance resilience and flexibility. Reducing fossil fuel dependence improves air quality, strengthens our local clean energy workforce, and makes Louisville more resilient to both climate impacts and energy price volatility. Multiple compliance pathways also give builders flexibility while maintaining strong outcomes. In summary, the Cohort Code package is a technically sound, regionally coordinated, and future-ready framework that advances Louisville's climate and community resilience goals. On behalf of the Sustainability Advisory Board, I urge the council to adopt the Cohort Code package with the 2024 IECC base. This is the responsible, forward-thinking choice for Louisville's future. Thank you for your leadership and commitment to a resilient, sustainable Louisville.
Thank you very much. Okay, all right. Why don't we take it back to council for questions and comments? Yes, Councilmember Hefner and then Councilmember Hamilton.
Yeah, I have a comment, and it's mostly procedural, and it's the same as the comment I made when we looked at this in October, which is we, well, first, this went to the Building Code Board of Appeals, and they gave us their expert recommendation. We considered it on discussion direction in August, passed it on first reading in October, and now we're considering it for the third time. And I hope, it is my sincere hope, that we will stick to the discussion direction, the direction we gave at discussion and direction in August, and adopt this as a clean package as presented, without additional tweaks or amendments. And I think the reason for that is because of some of the things we've heard tonight, that there is value in having an easy-to-understand, off-the-shelf code that's the same as what's been adopted in many other jurisdictions. I believe the 2024 codes are still progressive in a lot of ways, but they are going to be much easier to follow than what we had before, which was essentially a bespoke Louisville-specific building code that was, at best, difficult to understand. So those are my thoughts. I'm strongly in favor of the staff proposal as recommended, and hope to make a motion to that effect.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few questions regarding ADUs specifically. So the first one, in the the sprinkler section of the ordinance, we specifically list ADUs as an exception. In Section 150590, that talks about their certificate of occupancy, it does not, it says, let me look it up to see what exactly it says. It alludes to accessory, but doesn't exactly say ADUs. Let me pull it up here. It is... Okay, so exceptions. Cabins, agricultural, and accessory buildings and miscellaneous permits shall not receive certificates of occupancies. A letter of completion will be given upon request. Is there a reason why ADU is not specifically called out there? Like, it was in the sprinkler section?
Yeah. So on the energy section, so this is where it gets a little complicated, because we have a lot of, as you saw, we have a lot of different codes. On the energy code, the energy code's broken into kind of two sections. The first section is commercial, then the second section is residential. We made that note there as far as on the second section of the energy code, as far as ADUs, where they're exempt on that. And then also on the residential code for fire sprinklers, they're also exempt. They're called out specifically for ADUs, that they're exempt from fire sprinklers and also the the hers rating for the energy code.
So this was not an oversight? It was intentional that it says accessory buildings and does not say ADUs in this section?
Right, yeah, I think accessory dwelling units are occupied buildings. There, we consider them a residence, even though the word, the term accessory is used in them. So I think in this context, an accessory building is not necessarily an ADU, because as you know, ADUs could be attached to the main building, or they could be standalone occupied units. I don't know if that makes, adds to the clarification.
Yeah, accessory is kind of a wide range. Usually what they they talk about accessories, if you have like a little shed, that's an accessory, or a barn or a garage, that's an accessory in the building code.
Okay, this is all very helpful. And then I'll end by saying, you know, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Hefner's comments about the journey that we've been on to get to this point, the amount of experts within the community and on our boards that we've consulted to get to what I believe is a sweet spot at this point in time for our community and these codes.
There are other questions or comments? Yes, Mayor Protim?
Thanks, I mostly agree. I have one question about cohort adoption. Do you guys have the current list of who has actually adopted, not considering adoption, but has actually adopted the cohort version of the?
So the the latest update, I don't know if it's changed, but the latest was Golden, was the one community that has actually adopted it. And I think there's a, I don't know if that's changed. Yeah, so there's there's other communities that are, we anticipate will be considering it, but only Golden has adopted it.
Okay. And that, so I'll kind of circle back to that. I've been sort of anti-fire sprinkler code, or putting that in our code for, you know, single-family residential. And I appreciate the information that's come forward and some of the more detailed, you know, statistical benefits of, you know, sprinkler systems in, I'm assuming, are, you know, single-family homes. And I just say, I think at this point, I'm convinced at the the relative benefit over the relative cost, where a couple of years ago, I wasn't really. So, you know, I think that's a nice moment, information can change, change an opinion. But I think, yeah, wanted to be clear that I have, I have spoken out against needing that for a while, and so just didn't want my silence on that to be unmentioned. I think the biggest issue we had going to the 2021 code when we did was how fast we had done it and how few people had done it with us at that point. And sort of the early adoption, you know, adopting a 2021 code in 2021 was problematic. And, you know, I think we probably could have gotten through it, and we had some conversations about that right after the fact, that it's okay, you know, we only have five, 10, 15 homes being built in any given year. We'll get through it. And then we had a Marshall Fire, and that that timing was really tough for us learning something. So, you know, I am conscious of that, you know, thinking about this one, you know, it's 2025, it's the end of 2025, looking at 24 Code. And, you know, I think there's some good corrections here, and I've I've heard good things from a lot of people about this code versus the 21 Code. And I think we have had the time to to look into all of this. And so when it gets to the cohort piece, like, I, again, I've said this in so many different examples, I like I like being part of a larger group. I like being part of a cohort, whether it's minimum wage or building codes or anything in that manner. I like being part of a cohort. So it's difficult for me not to like say, let's be part of the cohort. Like I, I believe that, that we should be part of a cohort. I don't believe we should be the second or fifth member of that cohort. I don't think that's fair to our staff. I think, you know, when we come back to this and we say, hey Lafayette's joined, Broomfield's joined, Superior's joined, where's Louisville? Like, I agree, where's Louisville? This makes no sense. Why are we not a part of a cohort that everyone's a part of? But I don't want to make that same mistake twice and be the first ones in. I just don't think we're a big enough city, and we've gone through a lot already in that sort of unknown. So I'm not saying that the cohort's ideas aren't on point and won't be absolutely what we want to go with. I just don't like Louisville being on the front edge of that. So that's kind of a tough piece for me because, yeah, it goes sort of against part of who I am as a politician. But I feel like that's the right place for us now. So that's, that's why I wasn't here for the previous conversation, and so didn't have my comments on the record as far as that conversation went. So I'm torn, but I think this is the right approach. And so that's a long way, same way I said at the beginning, is I mostly agree with what was said. I want to get all that on the record.
Yes, Councilmember Fehe.
Yeah, I will agree with what Mayor Protem just said. I like the idea of being part of the cohort, but not number two. When there's more members and are more interested in more communities joining, I would love to join at a later date. And as far as the fire sprinkler systems, I would like them to be required for all new homes with the exemption for the Marshall Fire survivors who still own their original plot and have not rebuilt yet. But that would be the only exemption is for the fire survivors.
Okay, other council members? Yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
One quick question. So if we adopt what's been proposed tonight, will all duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes be required to install fire sprinklers?
Yeah, typically those are single-family, considered single-family homes under the residential code, and they would be required to install sprinklers.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make a few remarks about the energy code. You know, at our previous discussions, I was in support of adopting the Dr. Cog Cohort Code. I still am. But I, you know, clearly realize that majority of council is not in favor of adopting that at the moment. But I'd just like to restate and sort of further explain my position tonight. There are sort of two things I really like about the cohort code. The first one is that it really works to incentivize electrification. And I think that is really necessary if we're going to meet our climate goals. The second thing I like about it, and I actually think it could do even better, is that it incentivizes smaller residential units. And I think that it was, would be very good for attaining our housing goals. And, you know, building codes are one of the few ways that a local municipality in Colorado can really make a difference, I think, for our future greenhouse gas emissions. And so, you know, those are the primary reasons that I favor the cohort code. You know, I know that my fellow council members have concerns about moving forward with it at the moment, given that only Golden has adopted it. You know, clearly there are other communities planning to adopt it. And outside of our region, starting in the middle of next year, you know, anyone that updates their building codes will have to at least go to the state's model Low Energy and Carbon Code, which is fairly similar to the cohort code. So there are going to be a lot of communities, not just yet, but pretty soon, who are adopting something that is very much like the cohort code. And I think it's a good idea to, to have regional alignment on these types of things. Moreover, you know, if you look at Boulder, or even Lafayette, or even Louisville, there are aspects of our code here currently, certainly the code in Boulder and certainly the code in Lafayette, which are already surpassing 2024 IECC, especially on electrification. And so, yes, the, if we adopted the cohort code, it would be a little bit different. But there are certainly precedents in other places and here for some of the things that it includes. So, you know, my concern is actually that we are going to fall behind and be out of alignment regionally in not too long, and I don't think that's a good thing. I think that we are letting down our staff by doing that, who have worked for years in various different collaborations on what has become this cohort code through Dr. Cog. And I think we're also letting down our partner municipalities who have also participated in this same code development. You know, they have used information from Louisville, you know, some of our difficulties in how we implemented the 2021 with amendments, and tried to incorporate that information into their update into what is now the cohort code. And, you know, in part, that has led to the various different options that the cohort codes, cohort code has for complying. I am, I'm also concerned because, you know, given how our comprehensive plan is looking, we might be doing a considerable amount of building, particularly residential building in the city in the near future. And if we want, I think we need those new homes to be all-electric, right, if we want to have any chance of meeting our climate goals in the near term. And if we don't go with the cohort code, you know, I'm not sure we're going to achieve our climate goals with that building that we are likely to have. So those are my concerns. All of that said, I, I like, you know, I like the other things that we are adopting tonight. I am in favor of adding in the amendment so that people who are still rebuilding from the Marshall Fire don't have to do the fire sprinklers. And, you know, the 2024 IEC, it's not a terrible code. It's still a pretty good code. So I'm going to vote in favor of it in any case, even though I would much prefer that we were going with the cohort code. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. So I'm, this might be a question for you, Rob, or for you, Hannah. I would like to find out, are we still doing different incentives, whether that's through the state or through the city or the county, for different forms of electrification? Financial incentives and assistance?
Yes, we are. We have rebates for residential and commercial, and then Excel also has rebates available. And Dr. Cog will also be releasing a new group of rebates in the next few months as well.
That's great. And would like, with help of the city residents or builders who are going to be building single-family or multiplexes that qualify for a single-family residences, you would be able to help them understand where they could have those rebates or how to get those rebates?
There will be rebate navigators available through Dr. Cog and then also through the county. Whether they're available for developers is a different question. It's mostly going to be the property owner themselves.
Okay, great. I appreciate that, thank you. So I love the fact that we're incentivizing. I think that's always a great way to proceed, especially when we're on the cutting edge of things. And I'm delighted with it. I think that with as expensive as things are getting to build, those financial incentives, though, will really help people to do more of the electrification, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions with, as Councilwoman Cooperman said, potentially an increase in some new construction here in Louisville. I'm very inspired by our community. And I think that a lot of people make the choices that they can afford to make. A lot of times, things that are aspirational are just not affordable. So this is phenomenal that there's going to be additional incentives. I, too, would really appreciate seeing that we make one amendment, or two amendments. One, that we allow an exception for anybody rebuilding still with the Marshall Fire impacted by the Marshall Fire and original homeowner to not have to have the sprinklers. But that we also make certain that the energy code, that the language does get changed so that if they're not building to the 2018, they're building to the 2024, that their, the no-use tax still applies. Because I think the language right now is just 21. Maybe it's just amending that. My only concern, and I think Chad, you might be the best person to answer this, would be any additional cost between implementing the 24 IECC versus the 21?
No.
Okay, that's a great answer.
Not really at all. Our 21 code is kind of top shelf when it comes to electrification. Right now on commercial buildings, they're required to be all-electric with, we're allowing gas to be used for backup. 90% efficient gas furnaces, or 96%, I'm sorry, if they use gas right now on the 21. So it's actually going to be cheaper to build under the 24 code.
Thank you for your help with that. I appreciate that. That's great news, actually. I like that. So unless you want to make a comment before I make a motion, Mayor?
I haven't made my comments yet.
I didn't know if you wanted to make it after.
There's one more round of public comment.
Yeah, we haven't taken a public round. We haven't taken a second round of public comment. Okay. Well, I'm going to say my comments right now, and then... I have really three separate comments. One is just thanks to everybody who has had anything to do with these codes. I joked that it took a long time to say all those codes just to summarize what we're voting on. But the staff, and Chad, I really appreciate your work on this, and the Building Code Board of Appeals, you know, you rocket as usual on, on all of those, are familiar with the hundreds and hundreds of pages of code that you've, you've looked at and offered your professional opinion. It's, for those who don't know, the Building Code Board of Appeals is an unusual board because we require, like the Historical Preservation Commission, we require special knowledge to be on that group. And we really appreciate their bringing their understanding and thoughts to bear on that. We've also had fantastic public input, which I think is really important to, to recognize here. And I appreciate that tonight. I appreciate the letters that we've gotten over the course of all of this. Second, I wanted to recognize the, the comments about cost. I think this council, perhaps more than any council in my memory, has been sensitive to that. It may not be sensitive enough for, for some, but to the tremendous costs that these increasingly intricate codes impose on everybody. Developers, builders, folks who invest in property, folks who own property, folks who rent. And we do have to balance that. I think the Building Code Board of Appeals knows this in making their recommendations. I think they're sensitive to this, too. But I, I wanted that to be said. And I do, I, I want to recognize Christian Dino, who is not here, who labored in the vineyard to, to get a lot of the kind of uniformity and cost control and simplicity that I think we're, his committee or his, the board that he was chair of has presented to us. So I think that's worthwhile. I, too, am interested in an amendment, not to make it more complicated, but actually to make it simpler in one respect. When I think back to 2022, we did, for the folks who owned property within the burn zone that was burned down, we did permit them to build without conforming to the 21 code. They were able to opt out and go to the 2018 code and stay there. And also to build to, or to not have any sprinklers. There's an inconsistency, obviously. If we think this is really important for health, safety, well-being of everybody in Louisville, then that includes the people, no matter when they build. But I do think that there's an inequity that I'm certainly willing to consider an amendment to because the people who are still trying to build their homes, and there aren't a huge number, are the ones typically who are having the hardest time and have had the hardest time financially getting to that point. And so I, you know, this is one of those things I think I would prefer to have in the, in the code that we have. So at any rate, that's my comments for now. Let's get the second round.
First up is Susan Liu. Susan, you're muted on your end.
Hi, Susan Liu, Louisville resident. I applaud where I think you're going, and that is taking the Building Code, Building Code Board of Appeals recommendations and listening carefully to the people who actually do the work. I've said in the past, and a couple of, a couple of council have, have already repeated this, but in a different manner, there is no need for you, as, as Louisville City Council, to be on the leading edge of this cohort. You've got one municipality who's actually adopted it. The rest are all thinking about it. And you have no idea how that's going to turn out. So wait and see who adopts it. And if everybody in the metro area is going to take Dr. Cog's recommendation, I mean, by all means, it could be a good idea. But right now, it is not a good idea. And with regard to any building estimate, as many of you know, I lost my home and I rebuilt. And you may also know that I track dollars down to the pennies. And I just want to say that it always costs more than what you think it will be. So when people go, oh, it's only this much more, it's not really, because it never winds up being just that. It always winds up being more. So thank you for listening to me. I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Sue.
Next up is Chief John Wilson.
John Wilson, Louisville Fire Protection District. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, City Manager, and the rest of the city staff. I couldn't pass this opportunity to speak to you a couple more times before I retire. So here we go. You all know where the fire district stands on this issue, especially with residential sprinklers. But I want to emphasize just a couple of items. Previously, we had fire sprinklers in our residential homes. And, and, but we never really got a lot of complaints about them. I'm sure it went to the city because it was easier to complain to the city than it is to come to our Fire District Board of Directors meeting and complain there. So I'm sure we did receive some, but the district never did. Smoke detectors warn the occupants, but it doesn't do anything to the fires itself. The home builders are making homes safer. I can't disagree with that at all. But it's the stuff that we put in the homes that is causing such the smoke and the fire But it's the stuff that we put in the homes that is causing such the smoke and the fire that kills people. Accidental discharge, yes. Sometimes the pipes freeze, sometimes we hit the heads with objects and it discharges, and it causes damage. I won't disagree with that. It does cause some damage. But ultimately, it's the safety of people's lives that we're looking at. Insurance savings, who knows? Some insurance will do it, some will give you benefits, some don't. So it's all over the board. So it really comes down to the cost of sprinklers. And that cost is all over the board. I think maybe, and this is just my personal view, is we can't get the actual cost of sprinklers is because we don't have the actual cost of parts and labor because of markup. All the subcontractors and the general contractors are going to increase that, and we don't really have a good numbers for that. If we really want affordable housing, I think, I would like to challenge the home builders. I would like to challenge the city council. I would like to also challenge the fire district to come up with ways to reduce those costs so people can have affordable living here in Lewisville. What we're talking about is new homes. A lot of the homes that we're seeing outside the fire perimeter are people that are buying the houses, tearing them down, and building new ones. They can afford sprinklers, period. Last couple items, let's see, oh, development. There's a lot to develop, might be going down the road. I think we have the chance to maybe make waivers or come back with those things to make it more affordable. I handed out a piece of paper, a picture, that fires at 3 minutes and 38 seconds in a modern-day home. Please think about the families, pets, and firefighter lives, and pass these codes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. That's it for, okay, other comments first, or questions? Yes?
Yeah, I think just the fire codes again. I think, you know, I see both sides of that. I, you know, I think what's important, kind of like, when we rolled back the code in a sense and said, you know, fire victims can rebuild to the 2018 code, we noticed, and Robbie might have the number off the top of your head, but more than 50%, it was like 60, 70% built towards the 21 code? Do you remember what the number was?
I don't have the, I don't have the exact number.
But not way off.
But it was over 50%.
Yeah. And so like, that's what we noticed, right? And so the way, the way I think about the fire sprinkler situation is similar, if, you know, if we don't make it a requirement, some people won't do it. But I think if the costs are not that great, and if the benefits are that great, then I think the majority of people will opt in to do that, because it has a actual market value, and they'll want to do that. There's just, I think, as you were kind of pointing out, Mayor, an irony in the wording that the marshal fire victims are allowed to not have the fire sprinklers. Like, those are the, those are the people, like, the people that lost their homes to fire are the ones in our whole community that are exempt from having to put in fire sprinklers. That just feels weird for me. But I do, I appreciate you saying, Mayor, that from an equity perspective, lots of people have rebuilt their homes, and lots of people have been able to do it in a certain way. And for someone who is late to the game to rebuild their home, to have different rules, I can see how that, that's tough. So I'm okay with exempting it, and I would hope that we're just doing a good job as a staff, is when people come in and they don't have sprinklers in their home, that we're explaining, again, the benefits and the costs, but why, why we're, why we're obligating everyone to do it except them? So there's just another moment of like, oh, maybe we should do it. So that's, that's all I'll say. Otherwise, nothing's changed for me.
Sorry to interrupt. Do you, if you want the exemption language for marshal fire, if that's part of the motion, we have something drafted. So I wasn't sure if you wanted to include that. We could provide that language.
It's going to be included in the motion that I'm making.
Do you want us to provide the language?
If you, if you would, that would be good.
Okay. So our proposed-
Shall I, shall I, no, go ahead.
Well, sorry to interrupt.
That's all right.
Okay. So for the motion, if you want to include it, we are proposing, under Section 1505-120, there are exemptions to the residential sprinkler requirement. We recommend adding a third exemption that reads, "Building permits filed by the owner of record on December 31, 2021, for rebuilding of residential properties destroyed due to fire or other damage resulting from the marshal fire." So that would be the third exemption for residential sprinklers.
Can you read that one more time?
Yep. "Building permits filed by the owner of record on December 30, 2021, for rebuilding of residential properties destroyed due to fire or other damage resulting from the marshal fire."
Okay. All right. So motion is for passage of Ordinance Number 1907, Series 2025, an ordinance adopting by reference to 2024 International Building Code, 2024 International Residential Code, 2024 International Mechanical Code, 2024 International Fuel Gas Code, 2024 International Fire Code, 2024 International Existing Building Code, 2024 International Plumbing Code, 2024 International Property Maintenance Code, 2024 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, the Uniform 1997, excuse me, the 1997 Uniform Housing Code, and the 2024 International Energy Conservation Code, with the amendment or the additional language that Director Zakaro just provided. So that's the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Yes?
I just have one comment. Chief Wilson, you compelled me with your advocacy to save pets. I am very concerned, actually, about the cost of adding residential sprinklers as mandatory versus leaving in the code with an option for anybody to opt out, just because the cost is actually pretty high. But with the enhanced electrification, I think electrical fires are a lot of home fires. There is potentially a greater risk, and it would be horrifying to think that that would happen at home when no one else is at home but their four-legged family members. And it would be great if the fire suppression system could save their lives. So thank you for that.
The only comment that I would make in support of my own motion is simply, simply that although I've proposed the motion with that exception, I really hope that those who build their homes and could take advantage of the exception don't use it. I really hope that, that they can see fit to be able to build with the, with the sprinklers. But I think it's good and appropriate to give them the opportunity to build without. Yes, Councilmember Hefner.
I'm going to vote for this, but I just want to share that, look, there's lots of situations where we're faced with particular groups that have more urgent needs than others. And I am wary of making those considerations part of every single policy that we have. We cannot texture every single policy to apply differently to different groups of people based on their particular needs. In this case, I couldn't agree more that folks who lost their homes in the fire have particular needs, and certainly the folks who are still in the position of rebuilding. I agree with your sentiment, Mayor, that they are probably, many of them are facing greater struggles than the folks who rebuilt earlier. I just question the wisdom of addressing that problem through what is ultimately a safety provision in a building code and exempting some folks from a safety provision because of their particular need in this moment. I think there are other and better tools by which we can address their needs that won't have a negative impact on the person that buys the house 10 or 15 or 20 years from now, and maybe would have really liked to have, you know, up-to-code safety features, but now won't.
Thanks, Councilmember. Let's take a roll call, unless there's further comments, questions. Okay.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Let's go to the next item on our agenda, which is Ordinance Number 1903, Series 2021, and Ordinance Amending Title VII of the Lewisville Municipal Code Concerning Distance Restrictions for Natural Medicine Building Businesses in the City of Lewisville. It's on for second reading and public hearing. It was advertised in the, on the City of Lewisville website on September 26, 2025. Are there any disclosures to be made? Okay, otherwise, I'll turn to you, Matt, to make your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselors, Matt Post, Planner, Community Development. Item before you tonight is a second reading of an update to our natural medicine ordinance, amending Title 17 of the municipal code to update the method of measuring required separation distance between natural medicine businesses and schools and childcare facilities. As you know, this will be the second presentation. We did the first reading presentation previously, so I'll try to be brief on this one. But in November of 2022, Colorado voters passed Proposition 122, which decriminalized possession, cultivation, sharing, and use of psilocybin and other related substances. The new state law designated psilocybin and those other substances as natural medicine. The law paved the way for the establishment of natural medicine businesses within jurisdictions in the state of Colorado. While we are restricted from prohibiting those specific uses, we may regulate time, place, and manner for those businesses. For those who may be unaware, natural medicine businesses include natural medicine healing centers, where the natural medicine is administered in a clinical setting, natural medicine cultivation, natural medicine testing, and natural medicine manufacturing. And so with this state law, the city council adopted Ordinance 1887 in 2024, which permitted natural medicine business uses within the city of Lewisville. Moving on to the proposal here this evening, the state law includes a provision requiring that natural medicine business uses be conducted in buildings located at least 1,000 feet from schools and licensed childcare facilities. The law does specify how the distance should be measured, which is a direct line from the nearest property line of the school or childcare facility to the nearest portion of a building where the natural medicine services are being provided as a direct pedestrian route. It's also important to note that the law does, however, allow local jurisdictions to vary those distance restrictions, provided that the variation does not unreasonably restrict natural medicine business uses. As you recall, we discussed this method of measurement and reviewed a buffer map that illustrate potential impacts of measurement approaches, and the city council ultimately elected to adopt staff's recommendation of a property line to property line measurement as opposed to a direct pedestrian route. And so part of the request in the proposal is, of course, to update our method of measurement to align with what is in the state bill. Again, we were within our legal right to further modify that distance. But the new language that we've proposed so far is, I'm trying to put my glasses back on. I need to keep those on, sorry. Wrong time to take those off. So the language as of right now is, no natural medicine businesses may be located within 1,000 feet of a childcare center, preschool, elementary, middle, junior, or high school or residential childcare facility, and the distance shall be, the previous language was, shall be determined by a direct measurement from the nearest property line of the land used for a school or childcare facility to the nearest property line of the site containing the natural medicine business. We have updated that language to read, "The distance shall be calculated by measuring the most direct pedestrian route from the nearest property line of the land use to the nearest portion of the building or unit where the natural medicine business use will be located, and the measurement shall reflect a safe and lawful walking path without trespassing or use of alleys, and shall follow designated pedestrian routes and include right-angle crossings while observing all traffic signals and traffic regulations." So again, we included a detailed method of measurement to determine what a direct pedestrian route is when we're determining whether or not a natural medicine business use is within or outside of the 1,000-foot buffer from schools and childcare facilities. The map on the screen was the previously considered buffer map. This was at the time reflective of all existing licensed childcare facilities and schools within the city of Lewisville and just outside the jurisdiction of the city of Lewisville, where the buffer restriction would have applied. As you can see, I think a lot of the conversation we had previously revolved around what amounted to essentially a prohibition of natural medicine businesses on Main Street in downtown Lewisville. And of course, that's how the 1,000-foot buffer was applied previously. For example purposes, I did take another neighboring jurisdiction, as you recall, and highlighted an existing elementary school and highlighted a potential commercial parcel where a natural medicine business may be established. You can see the school outlined in blue. The red line would have been our existing method of measurement, and you can see that distance is just 240 feet between property boundaries. Under our existing ordinance, the property in yellow would be ineligible to establish a natural medicine business use based on what we currently have adopted. With our ordinance update, the green line would be the new method of measurement that would be utilizing a direct pedestrian route, including safe pedestrian access. And of course, that's restricting alleys. Councilor Kern, I believe you asked a question previously about why we restricted alleys. We made that decision, of course, because alleys are generally utilized as service lanes for vehicles and trash pickup, and are generally not considered safe pedestrian routes, although we do recognize that folks do use those alleys. We wanted to ensure we were consistent with the direct pedestrian route language. So again, just an example of how the new method of measurement would potentially apply here in the city of Lewisville and what that update would look like. So we anticipate that this change will primarily affect the siting of natural medicine healing centers. As you all recall, the healing centers where natural medicine is administered is permitted in commercial areas. Again, these commercial areas generally have, at least in the city of Lewisville, generally also have high concentrations of schools and childcare facilities in the general vicinity. And so under the city's existing property line to property line measurement, certain areas, again, particularly downtown, would be ineligible for healing centers. With the adoption of the new direct pedestrian measurement, it's likely that some areas of downtown may now become eligible for the establishment of natural medicine healing centers. Other areas, such as Centennial Valley and the McCaslin Corridor, will also be affected by the change, but those are, again, more, more concentrations of commercially-zoned properties, but less childcare facilities and schools in that particular part of town. We don't anticipate that natural medicine cultivation, testing, or manufacturing would be necessarily impacted by this update, as those uses are only permitted in industrial zone districts, so primarily CTC, where I believe there's one licensed childcare facility currently operating. And so with that, staff recommend approval of this ordinance, 1903, to update Title 17 of the municipal code, updating the method of measurement, requiring separation distances between natural medicine businesses and schools and childcare facilities. So happy to answer any questions. Council may have.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Yes, Councilmember Fahy?
Thank you. Yes, I'm wondering, does this only apply to facilities that only use natural medicines, or does it also apply to other rehab centers that sometimes use natural medicines?
Well, if a rehab facility is sometimes using natural medicine, they would have a facilitator license from the state, meaning they're engaging in a natural medicine use. And so we would, the buffer would apply in that scenario, yes.
Okay. And what if the facility was put in before, before the childcare facility?
Yeah, it would-
They have to shut down?
They would-
Or the preschool would not be allowed to build that close to a facility?
The facility would generally be considered non-conforming by both our code and state regulations as well. So the school would be able to locate there, and the facility would not be required to close in that scenario.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Cooperman?
I just have one question. So the example that you put up, I guess in Lafayette, there's quite a difference, right, between- between the two measurements or two ways of measuring the distance. You know, just thinking about how things are laid out in Louisville, particularly in downtown, do you expect such disparities between the two ways of measuring the distance? Or not so much?
Yeah, I would imagine that we will come across this method of measurement in downtown Louisville, surely. Yes, I would imagine that we will. Yeah.
And, but, okay. So I guess, like, do you think the... Sorry. The new, the green path that we would now be measuring in Louisville, do you think it will be, you know, notably longer than the corresponding red one? I mean, I don't know if you can really generalize, but...
So I think what you... I think the question is, will there be more opportunities for natural medicine businesses in downtown because of the new measurement? And I think, yes, there will be more opportunities for businesses. It opens up more areas where businesses could be allowed.
Right. I guess I'm just saying, that example seems like it's probably an extreme. Maybe not, I don't know. And I'm just wondering, you know, do we expect to have such extreme differences in Louisville? Or it'll be a little bit more, a little bit looser, but not that much looser?
I think, I'll say this. I selected that particular aerial because I did feel that it exhibited a similar development pattern to what we have downtown. And in Old Town, more specifically, in that we have single-family residential that does include licensed childcare facility uses, and we have some, obviously, well-established preschool centers that are just outside of downtown, off of Main Street. So we have those rows of land uses where those are permitted, and alley separation, and then direct pedestrian routes to commercial centers. So yeah, I think that I would imagine that we will see the disparity, right, play out in some way, shape, or form. I think if you look at the existing buffer map, you can see the... I think we have Louisville preschool here. I can't remember the names of them. I'm sorry, preschool, preschool. So right now, you got 1,000-foot buffers that extend. We'll now convert that to a 1,000-foot direct pedestrian measurement. So I think, so to the director's point, I think we'll see more opportunity, for sure.
Yeah, okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Other questions from council? All right. Why don't we take our first round of public comment? No public comment. All right. Bring it back to questions. Council comments? Yes, councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Matt, you said the proposed amendment aligns with state language. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I just wanted to thank staff for pivoting so quickly with this amendment. You know, within a year of the original proposal, we identified that, you know, while we had the best of intentions, maybe our original idea didn't necessarily serve our community best. So I thank you guys for bringing this back to the table so quickly and making the adjustment here.
Other comments? Okay, second round of public comment. Do we have any comments? All right. Bring it back to council for any discussion or motion. Yes, councilmember Hefner.
I would move we approve ordinance number 1903, series 2025.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just share my thanks as well for getting this done. I know there's one particular business that will be grateful. So thanks, everyone.
Right. Any other comments? Let's take a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson.
Yes.
Mayor Lay.
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next item is ordinance number 1909, series 2025, an ordinance authorizing the sale and conveyance of the city-owned property at 1016 Main Street. This is on for second reading and a public hearing. It was advertised on the Louisville website on October 27, 2025. And pass it off to Director Zakarrel.
See, good evening again. I'm going to be making a very, very brief staff presentation on this. Let's see, make sure I've got the right slide up here. Yes. So this is second reading for the sale of 1016 Main. As you know, the city council approved a contract to sell the property once it's landmarked, after we acquired the property using historic preservation funds. You'll actually be seeing the landmark request at your next meeting, I believe, on the 18th. And this ordinance is required in order to convey the property and set that sale up, which we don't have a closing date yet, but we're hoping at the end of this month we'll arrange the closing if things continue to move forward. Be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Okay, take our first round of public comment. No public comment. All right, bring it back to council for questions or discussion. Seeing none. Oh, yes, sorry about that. Councilmember Hamilton.
That's okay. I just felt like it was worth, I mean, again, thanking Rob and his staff for moving so quickly in this process. I think this was the first time when we've used HPC funds to, you know, identify a property that's so treasured by our community and save it from being lost from our history. And I'll admit, I was a little uncertain how quick we were going to be able to turn around and find a new buyer. And somehow, you managed and your team to do it really quickly, which is phenomenal, because then that brings the funds back into HPC to be utilized for other purposes sooner rather than later. So expressing my gratitude to you for such a quick turnaround time and great work on this. Thank you, Rob.
Want to make... There were some concerns in the community about the possibility that the council might take a little bit of a hit on this. This property was bought and sold for the same amount and got the landmarking that we wanted to do before selling it back. And that's a terrific opportunity. It was a terrific, I think, sale and purchase sale. So any other comments? Yes, council or Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I'll keep it brief, but yeah, huge win. Just like, really, really great work from staff. And I think I was and am still comfortable with this having been a loss. I think that's like, it's okay to spend a little money to get the result that we got. And so the fact that that's not even happening is phenomenal. But I think as you look at other opportunities like this, you guys were in some way... I know the decision came down to us, but I think staff was very brave and HPC was brave to try this. And the fact that it worked out so well is cool, but also just thinking like, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't have to work out this well for it to be a success. So just kudos to everybody, and I hope there's another opportunity in the next five years.
Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. Yep, I was just going to pass my gratitude as well. Really appreciate the work that went into it. And interestingly enough, it's not just a local treasure. It's actually a national one. And so it's nice that we can recognize that and preserve something, although doesn't meet the historic preservation needs only when it's nationally registered. On the National Registry, it's really great to be able to do both. And quite a kudo, fun thing. I think it might be the only one, bless you, in Louisville. So, thank you.
Nice catch. Mid-sentence. Any other comments? Why don't we send it back for second round of public comment? Bring it back to council discussion. Is there any more council?
Go ahead.
Discussion.
Please.
All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to move the passing of ordinance 1903, 2025, an ordinance amending Title 17 of Louisville... Nope. I wasn't ready. I'll start over. I'd like to... Yeah, right. I mean, I started like, that doesn't sound right. Move the passing of ordinance number 1909, series 2025, an ordinance authorizing the sale and conveyance of the city-owned property at 1016 Main Street.
Second.
Any further comments? All right. Let's take a roll call, please.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Yes.
Mayor Lay.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson.
Yes.
Right, motion passes. We're on to the next item, which is community event sponsorships, January 26 to June 2026. And I believe that Deputy City Manager, Sam Fox, is going to provide the staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. I have a brief staff presentation for us, and we'll be looking for some guidance from councils throughout this. So first, I want to thank our executive assistant in the city manager's office, Mindy Oker, who really ran with this program and managed it for us. So without further ado, let me get started. So just a reminder, we are here tonight to review our first-ever set of community event sponsorship applications and to provide direction and determine the awards for these. A little bit of background here. So council has just adopted this program effective September 1st. Council had selected to put $10,000 in the budget for 2026 for this, to be split into two parts of the year. So $5,000 for the beginning. Those are the events we'll be looking at today, and $5,000 for the next. This did come through Economic Vitality Committee before going to council. And eligible events include things that promote cultural, artistic, and athletic enrichment, create opportunities for community connection, and strengthen Louisville's traditions. To be eligible for sponsorship, the event must provide direct benefits to Louisville residents, agree to promote the city's sponsorship, be open to the public. And I have a little caveat there about ticketed events, which the policy addresses, and we'll talk more about in this presentation. Have the majority of the event located in Louisville, contribute to economic vitality, and maybe a nonprofit organization, neighborhood group, or school organization. Of course, all events must have proper permitting, insurance, and liability documentation, and events cannot serve political or religious purposes. So for this group, we had a cross-departmental team not only help build the policy and review, but also advertise. So we were working with our economic development teams, our clerk's office, who does special events, our cultural services teams, to help get the word out as well as our general communications. We had nine applications. In staff's review, we have four that clearly met the criteria, and staff has made recommendations for those awards, three that require some additional review, and two that do not qualify. And I'll take a moment here to add, staff took from the council conversation your guidance that awards should be capped at $1,000, 50% of the ask, and include the in-kind service cost. So you'll see that in our recommendations here. So our first set of recommendations are for the four that meet eligibility criteria. So that's the Neighbors Connect Get Together. That's the My Nature Lab 5K, the Rock for Louisville, or the Rock for the People Louisville Live Event, and the Sinitta Sports Tuesday Thunder Events. So each of these meets our criteria. Staff has taken the monetary requests and their in-kind request. Staff has put an in-kind cost estimate to each of these requests. And you have a table in your packet. I know it's small print. I'm looking at it myself, which breaks out what those in-kind costs are. Based on that, we've made these recommendations for each one. So that's up to $850 for the Neighbors Connect, up to $600 for the My Nature Lab, and then $1,000 for each of the others, bringing you to just under $3,500 for this recommended award. The next set of application... Well, for consistency, before I go there, because there are, the awards are higher than the cap, we wanted to set a standard for how we would award this funding. So with council support, our recommendation is that we would first award monetary requests, up to the requested amount, then the marketing support, and then deduct the rest off of any other fees or in-kind services. So there's a standard for how we apply these, and there's no questions for people. We have three ticketed events. There is a qualification in the policy that ticketed events seeking council sponsorship must demonstrate significant positive impact on the community and provide an opportunity for broad public access. So the three ticketed events that we'll be seeking some additional council guidance on are the Commuting Solutions Silver Sponsorship for their two flagship events, Legislative Breakfast at the beginning of the year, the Littleton Elementary School Parent Teacher Organization, Silent Auction and Panther Party, and the Davis McPhinney Tour de Victory. So each of these has made requests. They are ticketed events. As we get through the next couple slides, we'll be seeking council guidance on whether you'd like to use some of that remaining award money to award these events or not. We had two events that we determined ineligible, the Without Limit Productions Louisville Criterion and the 3W Races Colorado 13er. Both of these organizations are for-profit organizations as they listed on their application, which is why staff determined them to be ineligible. So council direction we're looking for. We want to know if you support the staff recommendations and approach for awards. We'd like to know if you wish to make any awards for the ticketed events. We're seeking your guidance on that. And then if there is any remaining award money, we are curious to know if council would like to roll that into the second wave of events. We typically have more events in the second half of the year.
Anything further on it, on the presentation?
Nope, just thank you and next steps.
Okay. Wanted to put those questions up, if you would. But before we do that, I have... There's actually a disclosure on council. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. Just wanted to say, I am associated with the Neighbors Connect organization, to some extent. I had nothing to do with the application that was submitted. I actually didn't even know the application was being submitted until after it was submitted. And I don't currently have any role with the event that was proposed. So I feel like, you know, I can judge the applications fairly, even though I have this association with one of the organizations.
Great. Mayor Pro Tem?
In the interest of the same transparency, I am the founder and creator of Louisville Live, but I gave them the name and said, do whatever you want with it, and I'm not involved in any way, shape, or form anymore. But if you knew that about me, you might think I'm still involved, so I'm not.
All right, then. Any other disclosures? Okay. If it's all the same to the council, why don't we just go through each of those questions and answer them? We'll start with, actually, hold on. Well, no, let's take public comment first. Let's do public comment. Any comment? Nope. All right. Then let's come back to council for direction and action. How about, I don't know that we're going to need a motion on this, but I, and so we'll just sort of see how it goes here, but do folks generally support the staff recommendation? Yeah? Okay. Looks like we've got pretty clear direction there. Does council wish to make any awards for ticketed events? And just to make it clear, these are events, just a question, these are events where it costs the attendees something?
Correct. The attendees would have to buy a ticket to participate.
All right. Got it. Go ahead, council members.
I don't think we should.
Okay. Anybody want to speak to a positive view of that?
I mean, I think I disagree with, like, absolutely not. I think generally, I would agree that that's not the purpose, but I can imagine an event that we absolutely want to support that also happens to sell tickets for them. I mean, there are a lot of nonprofit events where part of raising money is to sell tickets, and that goes to the charity, what have you. So I don't, I don't think I am like, a blanket, we can never award something, but I think maybe the idea is that that's unlikely, you'd have to propose that for an exemption or something, like, we typically do not, but I'm okay either way, I just, I wouldn't want to handcuff us that badly.
Councilmember Kern?
Thank you. I actually appreciate this and the time that went into looking at this and getting us the information. It's a great opportunity for us to help some interesting and needed organizations. I do think we should stick with the policy, if it's a ticketed event, we should not be, this is not the intention of this. I think if there were exceptions, like it was voluntary, so if somebody couldn't afford to pay for the ticketed event, and because it was sponsored by us, therefore a Louisville resident can enter, then I would feel differently, but that, at least it doesn't state that on any of these three, that there's no, that there would be an exemption made for a Louisville resident. And definitely, I agree that for the for-profit events, at least from what I'm seeing, probably, you know, if there was some really great exception, we may be discussed further, but I'm not seeing a reason to. And I do love the idea of moving whatever remaining funds into the upcoming second half of the year.
Other comments? I tend to agree with Mayor Pro Tem. I think it may be too broad, in my view, to say that we don't ever provide funds to a ticketed event. I could see an event that happens in a fairly small space, where there's only room for so many people, and perhaps to defray some of the costs, are seeking our assistance to do that. I mean, it's easier for outside events, and I think all of these, if I'm looking at, maybe some of them are outdoors. You know, I just am thinking that that, you know, renting a place might well be, you know, something that we might want to support with funding, depending on how that goes. So I don't, personally, I don't think a categorical rule that says we don't provide money to ticketed events is great, but I don't seem to have any votes with that, so.
I will say, I'm also not inclined to pay for ticketed events, but we could leave it open for exceptions, for if there's some exceptional reason why they need the funding and our contribution would be a significant help, then just leave it open that we could make exceptions to the no-ticketed events rule.
I think staff can continue to present it in this manner, we can highlight those ticketed items and let council make the judgment call if you'd like.
Well, we can, except I want to make sure that that's the will of council right now.
I think today, council does not wish to make any awards for ticketed events today.
That's the understanding that I have. We can revisit that perhaps some other time, if we want to, but for today and for the foreseeable future, that's the answer on that one. If the awards are under $5,000, does council wish to add this to total available for Cycle Two? Thumbs up? Yeah?
I was going to say no, but it's such a small amount of money. I honestly don't think we need to have this conversation in future cycles of this program, but I'm fine either way.
One question that, and I didn't, you've probably covered this, and I just had a momentary lapse. We can provide in-kind services, right? And is that part of the total amount?
Correct.
So if we have, I mean, we're providing now 20, let's say, what, 3450 of the 4,000? And I presume, based on what we're talking about on the third, that we rolled the difference over?
Mm-hmm.
If, so what we're saying about the in-kind would be, they would request that?
Yes, so we have asked all the applicants to request monetary if they would like, and to also request in-kind, and then we've given them some categories. So we have put a cost to each of those in-kind services, and you can see, we've broken it down in the materials of what things would look like. So just for the first event, for example, our recommended award is up to $850. They've requested $300 monetary, so we would do that. We would do the in-kind marketing, and then that remaining dollar amount, we would take off their fee.
Okay. You know, I have one other comment, and it's really apart and separate, maybe something to be thought about by the staff. I noticed that one of the applicants, and I don't really want to pick on anyone, but I think it raises a bigger issue. There's one applicant where we already contribute to the organization pretty substantially. And so, you know, I am a little concerned about their asking for $2,100 in addition to what they already get from us as a membership, you know, and I would, I don't know, it seems to me that that ought to be some consideration for disqualifying the organizations that do that, if we're already giving them funds, but I don't know how council feels about that. That wasn't in specific, you know, provisions of the approach, but I think I would propose that if we already support an organization that's making a request that we don't provide additional money through this community event sponsorship. Yeah. Councilmember Hamilton, Mayor Pro Tem.
I would propose that we just consider on the application, are you already receiving funds from the city? And then we can make a determination, you know, when staff does their review and brings to us their proposal, we can decide, like, is that extra event worth additional investment above and beyond our other contributions? I think a blanket, I think having that openness would be good, moving forward.
That sounds, that sounds great to me, too. All right. Anything else? Yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
I think when we discussed this before, we talked about possibly advertising for events that are not selected, I believe. Is that still going to be the case? And, you know, if so, is it only going to be the ones that actually meet our criteria? Or what will the situation be?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we actually had marketing support as one of the in-kind items, and surprisingly, I believe only one of the applications, or certainly only one of the recommended applications, actually checked that box. So our proposal is only to provide that support for the supported applications who we have determined is part of their award for.
Okay. All right, unless there's any, yes, Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. On that, though, without a specific marketing request, since it is going to be an event that we are helping to sponsor, essentially fund, we will still be advertising this on the city calendar, that kind of thing, it just won't be, because I would love to understand what the difference is between marketing and we still announce it so that people understand that this is happening.
Yeah, our proposal with marketing is inclusion in, like, the lantern and the print three-month calendar, which wouldn't necessarily happen for every event here. I think if council's interested in if we supported an event, we could, for example, share what they do on socials and amplify.
Could we also put it in the Look Ahead?
I would ask that council just consider the opportunity cost of what might be coming out of the Look Ahead. If council's interested, we certainly can, but that'll just add to the Look Ahead space.
Yeah, I don't think I would want it in the Look Ahead, because I think that's precious space for us.
Well, we advertise when we're doing something like at the library, when there's a, like, a little, a knitting event or a sewing class or some other thing.
That's a city project.
But these are being city-sponsored.
Right. But, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just like, Sam, if you could address with the website update that we're going to have a separate calendar, or some way of promoting or giving people the opportunity to put their events on the city calendar.
Yes, so we are looking for this in the website update, a number of enhancements, but a way that people can proactively place their items out there, so that they can see and they have a forum for that amplification.
And I'd like to clarify, so what we're saying is, for the four events that council's approving tonight, we would do marketing for those events, even if they didn't check the box for marketing support. So they would still be in the lantern, or they would be listed. It's just that, is that correct, Sam?
That's actually not correct.
Okay.
But we can go that way.
So if council wants us to, if we're going to support those, put them in our calendar. I wouldn't recommend the Look Ahead, because we're really trying to focus mainly on city events for that, but we have a lot of, we have a lot of other posts that we do for different things, so.
Yeah, I was just thinking, since we are doing this, and it is a really great idea, I mean, if we think that they're worthy enough to put the taxpayers' dollars to, I think that maybe the taxpayers should also have a way to know about it, other than just social media, because there's an awful lot of our residents who are not on social media and therefore would not know about it. So at a minimum, the calendar, but I'd encourage, if we could, maybe it's not the Look Ahead, but maybe there is some other way, that these events, that the public gets to know, especially, like, I'm thinking of the Neighbors Connect, wouldn't it be a disappointing opportunity, like, an opportunity missed, although I guess they're getting the marketing, never mind.
They did request marketing, yes.
Yeah, okay. So I'm just, I'm just hoping, though, that everybody in Louisville gets to know about these events, knows that they're also contributing their dollars to it, and we thought it would be of value and interest.
Any other thoughts about that particular edition? Go ahead.
Yeah, I definitely tend to agree with Councilmember Kern. I would say, like, at least on the city's calendar, you know, before we get, or maybe even after we do these updates to the website.
Councilmember Hamilton?
I'm fine with all of that. I think the point of it being taxpayer dollars and taxpayers should be aware of the events that their money is funding is poignant. I think, you know, this is a new process, and we're learning, and it's kind of iterative in a way to start, just being clear in, again, the application or wherever it's appropriate of, these are the marketing opportunities that are provided at no cost, as if you're selected. If you want above and beyond, then it would be at a cost to you in your application. Just so everyone is on the same page of what the playing field does to start and what the upgrades would be.
Yeah, but I'd say thank you, councilmember, for bringing up that reminder, this is new. We've had a number of learning opportunities throughout this process, so we will be adjusting that application for the next cycle. We'll continue improving.
One clarification on the calendar piece. Is that, is that something that, clearly, we're talking about putting these four events on the calendar, I get that, but are you thinking about moving beyond that to add other community events that aren't sponsored onto the calendar?
On the current city calendar, no. On the future website, that's a conversation we're looking to have.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? I think we got it right. Do you feel like you have direction now on all those three questions, and even more? Councilmember Kern?
So I noticed that two of the ones that we did not, that you did not select, or actually, not events occurring in Louisville, is that part of the criteria that we'd like to add in, that the event should or does need to be occurring in Louisville?
It's actually currently part of the criteria, that the majority of the events should be in Louisville.
Okay. Thank you.
Discussion, federal government shutdown, community impacts, and I guess you're up again, Sam.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilwoman, Sam Fox, Deputy City Manager. So I just have a brief verbal presentation here, and this is an evolving situation. I was asked to prepare a little bit of information about the community impacts of the ongoing federal shutdown. We're currently in day 34, the longest federal government shutdown, I understand, is 35 days, so we're on track to meet that. There have been a number of concerns about potential impacts. SNAP or food assistance is currently the largest impact that I'm aware of. I do understand that items like WIC, like Medicaid and CHP Plus, housing vouchers are still progressing and not impacted at this point in time. So I'm going to focus a little bit on SNAP. Breaking as of today, we understand the federal government is going to fund about half of the SNAP benefits for the month of November. I still don't know what administration looks like for that. I think it's safe to assume some delays. It's going to take some work to get that through federal, state, and local systems into those benefits, where those benefits are needed in individuals. For East Boulder County, just a little bit of insight, we're grouped here, working under the county, we have almost 4,000 unique individuals who are served by SNAP. That's over 2,000 households and about 1,400 children, so just for awareness there. There are a number of things that the state and the county are working on. The state has put some emergency funds through this and also stood up some programming to try and support food shares. The county certainly encourages people to continue applying. They have some sort of food bags they're trying to give people, snack bags they're calling them, to fill the gap. They're also trying to support neighborhood food resources and encouraging connecting people to those emergency sources. They're also connecting people to the area agency on aging, and there's some work being done to try and identify people at Zero Balance, so those who are most in need with their SNAP benefits. With that, this is really an opportunity for council to have some conversation, and Dan and I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on that? Okay, let's take you back to questions, council. Do you have any questions or discussion about this? I can put you on the spot a little bit, Councilmember Cooperman, or Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. I'd actually like to applaud, and I'm always impressed and amazed with our Louisville community and our residents. We actually have some neighborhood initiatives already that are in place in anticipation that the shutdown may continue, and a lot of these people took action, not knowing whether or not the SNAP benefits would be funded at all. As a point of note, there's actually an increase in the WIC contributions, in the WIC funding in November. So women, infants, and children will actually have the same and more funding, even though they are cutting supposedly, as for now anyway, the 50% in the SNAP benefits. But what our neighborhoods are doing is they're doing a community food share, food drive, and it's whether it's cash donation, because every dollar buys about $5 for the food, or a specific list of requested items that's been put out by Community Food Share. So the incredible people of Louisville are already stepping up neighborhood by neighborhood to help each other, and I just want to really put that out there, applaud them. I will just give a very big shout-out, because I'm proud to be in the cornerstone neighborhood, which is one of the neighborhoods that's participating. So kudos to all of you who are watching. So just so that all of you know as well, this is not something that is going unnoticed. As you know, the state is already working on this as well. I think, and I actually really appreciated Councilmember Hamilton's comments at our last council meeting, that I would like this to be a bigger conversation, it's not necessarily what's slotted for tonight, to talk about how we would provide emergency care services to people. We did something with COVID, with Marshall Fire, and now we have a long government shutdown. I think it's a bigger conversation versus just focusing on this. My personal sense is, for this now, we should, as a council, wait and watch and see where Sister Carmen and Community Food Share and other providers of essential needs are for the members. We have engaged, our staff has done a great job already engaging with the Louisville Senior Center, and Councilmember Fahy and I were having a conversation about that, to make sure that our seniors in need are not going hungry. And there is lunch every day. It is a voluntary donation to have lunch, so if you are a senior in Louisville and you would like to join, you would like to have a really good meal, please go to the rec center, and Councilmember Fahy might know the exact time.
The time is 12 noon, Monday through Friday, and you, but you have to make a reservation the day before, 24 hours before.
Calling the rec center sufficient?
Call the rec center, make a reservation for lunch the next day, or for every day.
Okay, perfect.
Yes.
Thank you. So I really want to let all of you know that we do have the resources to provide the meal for all of our seniors in the community, even more than what are already attending, so everybody, please come, they're welcome. And I just wanted to kind of share all those fun updates with all of you.
Councilmember Fahy?
Following up on that note, for the Senior Center, it would be helpful if we could get the word out to all the seniors in Louisville that this service is available, and the Senior Center has a lot of other services and activities that are available also. And I know a lot of people don't understand, but one of the most important things about aging well is the social interactions. So it's not just coming and getting food, it's sitting and talking to somebody about why you're there getting food and what you're going to do when you leave. So if we could get the word out and get more seniors to actually attend, it would be wonderful.
Thank you. Other comments, thoughts? Councilmember Cooperman?
One idea I wanted to put out there, you know, would it, or is there a way, or would it be appropriate for the city or council to encourage people to have a food drive, or make a donation to Community Food Share, or whatnot, you know, in light of the current situation? situation?
I don't think any of us need any particular approval to do that. I think many of us are doing that. We can say tonight. I mean, I think that's one of the senses I get, is that we're encouraging of people who are already doing those kinds of efforts and encourage other people to do it. I know churches and a whole bunch of other civic organizations are doing similar things, which is good. And I'm glad we had the conversation. I'm glad that the federal government is doing something on this, you know, and I, too, agree with the comments that Councilmember Hamilton made the last time about it being probably a bigger conversation than we have capacity for tonight to think about, are there circumstances down the road that maybe should lead us to have a budget item or something like that if we choose to do it? I think we all know that the county is the sort of provider, first resort for public assistance to people for health and welfare issues, but, you know, that's an issue for another day for council. But I think it's great to encourage everybody possible to give food and items to the, excuse me, to Community Food Share and also to be participants in the upcoming Thanksgiving Day turkey trot, which will help them a lot this year. So, anyway, other, other ideas before we move on? Yeah, Council, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I don't, I can't tell if there's any appetite for any direct action right now. It seems not. You know, I think my, you know, my thought, for instance, you know, my company has a weird thing. For someone's ninth anniversary, working for a company, we donate on their behalf to a charity of their choice, $1,500. So one of our employees chose Community Food Share as the recipient, and so we're going to get to do that. But what we're working with them on is a, like a link or QR code to like add to Julie's contribution, right? And so we can send it to our tenants and owners to try to get that, right? So it's another example of something that's happening and something my company can do and a neighborhood can do, and what I'm just curious about, like, okay, so what does council want to do? Like, so I know what my company's doing, I know what your neighborhood's doing, I know what other people are doing, what are we doing as the leaders of our community? What's, what's our action? And if, and if there isn't an action, then that's okay. If there's a similar action, like, well, we're gonna, we're gonna at least put, you know, $5,000 towards Community Food Share, who supports Sister Carmen and other organizations, like, we're gonna do that, and we're gonna create a code that you can jump on board and join city council and donate with this link and see, let's see how much we can raise as a city, right? Like, I don't, you know, I'm not trying to create the entire thing, but I think that there is a real, serious food insecurity moment upon us with a drastic cut in SNAP benefits, and there are lots of solutions to it. And we cannot and will not be the solution, that is impossible. But I think joining that moment right now seems appropriate to me. So, you know, I, I think there are dollar amounts that our staff is able to spend without it being a budget conversation of an actual budget amendment, but I don't know if there's any appetite for any amount of money, like, tonight for that organization, I would be up for that. But if not, then I'm okay with doing other things that we do. But is there, is, I mean, maybe you've been asking staff, like, is that even possible? Am I just pulling that out of my hat? Hi.
Hi. Sorry, I was just, are you asking for council to approve a sum of money tonight? Because that's not on the agenda.
Great, that would answer that question.
But be a future agenda item.
What I might suggest is that if you want to provide the QR code to members of council, maybe some of us will join in. Yes, Councilmember Hefner.
I might suggest in the, to the Mayor Protem's idea, we, every year, we have, we have a nonprofit grant program, and every year we give money to Sister Carmen and other organizations. I mean, why not just, why not just give them an advance on next year's, and then we'll give it to them again next year? But, you know, we, like, we have the, we have their 990, we have all their information to write them a check, and I know we can't decide it tonight, but maybe to bring back as a consent item, can we just, can we advance what we were going to do in 2026 anyway? It's usually a few thousand dollars, it's not a, it's not an overwhelming amount of money.
Yeah, I don't know, that's not on the agenda either.
No, as a future agenda item.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we can get there in just a second, how about that?
Yeah, I'm suggesting as, as part of the discussion that was noticed about this topic, because we're having the discussion currently.
Right.
Okay.
I don't think it's on the agenda to decide whether we're going to advance it. It may be something that we can decide.
I'm not suggesting that we decide, I'm suggesting we decide to bring it back in the future.
Okay.
Future agenda item.
I get that. Just wait for a minute, and we'll go over it. City Attorney's Report.
I have no report, thank you.
Okay, identification of future agenda items, I think Councilmember Hefner has just mentioned one. Is there any other?
Yeah, I mentioned it as part of item F, but I'll mention it again here as part of item 10.
Duly noted. Is there any other new agenda item?
Does anybody have interest in my suggestion? Like, can we have a, can we have a quick? Okay.
I think that what I would like to do with that, though, if we could, is engage with the organizations and actually assess where the need is. I think that there has been some assessment done, and there's always a need, but there's not a specific one yet, and the good news is that at an absolute minimum, the benefits will be matched at 50, will be funded at 50%. They have increased the amount of money and food being provided under WIC. So I think rather than saying, hey, let's just preemptively make a decision, let's also make sure we get the information from the organizations to see if they really do need the funds now or they would like to have them as part of next year. Thank you.
Put those items on a agenda very soon, maybe next regular meeting?
We can. So are we just focusing on organizations that we've contributed to that would provide food to the community? Okay. So we have options, we can bring it back on the, the 18th, I think that's our next regular meeting. We do have the special meeting next Monday on the 10th. I don't know that we could pull this together in time for that. If you're willing to accept a very sparse council communication report, we can bring it forward next Monday so that you can make a decision quicker and not have to wait two weeks.
What is the will of council? Yeah, Councilmember Hefner.
I'll just say, much as I'd like to have a lot of engagement with the organizations, and maybe we can by next Monday, my experience with these kinds of community-serving organizations is they always need money. They can always do something with more money. They can't always do something with an in-kind contribution or something more complicated, but money is pretty much good for anything. And, I mean, what I'm suggesting is not anything complicated, no reinvention of the wheel. We look at what organizations did we give to, which of them are sort of related in any way to this situation that we're talking about, and try and just give them the same amount of money right now.
Any other thoughts?
So that was in favor of a sparse presentation, by the way, just to be clear.
Like next week?
Yeah. Whenever staff is ready, but I don't, I don't think we need pages and pages.
I don't have a lot of energy about the dates. I mean, I think a sparse presentation is probably just fine, because I think you're right. I think every organization is, that's doing these kinds of things, is particularly Sister Carmen and Community Food Share are clamoring for help, so.
I will also add that as soon as possible is good, because this is hitting right now.
So next week, on our next special meeting? Any other thing you're knitting your brow? Councilmember Kern, do you have anything to add?
Well, I just, when we make the contributions to organizations like Sister Carmen, we make it on behalf of Louisville residents. So I think these numbers are large, they are not predominantly majority Louisville residents. So if we're spending, I'll go back to my taxpayer dollars again. So Louisville residents can make a choice to contribute to anything that they would like to contribute on their own as individual residents. But when we are spending everybody's money, including low-income members of our community that contribute, do we want to make certain that that is being earmarked for Louisville residents?
May I make a suggestion? Why don't we do that when we got it on the agenda next week? I think it's a good question, if we can just bracket it until then. Great. All right. Do we have a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. It was like, for what? And I was going to say, I almost didn't recognize that the distinguished gentleman from Ward Three is in the house.
Thank you.